To 7:03, and I'm going to call the Monday, June 24th, regular Board of Education meeting to order. Nikki, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Nikki Austin, present. Jim Curran, absent. Rich DePerry.
Present.
Eric Ekdahl.
Present.
Rosa.
Present.
Teresa Keen, present.
President.
Terry Montgomery.
Present.
And Phil Basberg.
Present. Okay, we have a quorum. We are in session. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Rich, can I make a request regarding the agenda?
Sure. What would you like to?
I'd like to ask that we move the finance presentation before any compensation or contract discussions.
Is there a second to amend the agenda to move that discussion prior?
I'm trying to see what you think.
Stand by.
Oh, so to move K to switch like B and K? Is that what you're saying, Mike?
To move K to the front of the new business.
So then, so it'd be K and then A, B?
Correct.
That's fine.
So, got a motion by Mike and a second by Teresa.
It's more of a time thing, right? It'll be the longest part of the agenda, so we have guests here too.
Is there a reason why you'd like to handle them in that order?
I think the financial information in that presentation should inform our discussion concerning compensation and contracts.
Okay. Got a motion and a second.
If we're worried about time, could we move A and B down?
I was just going to say that same thing if we're worried. So I don't know if you heard, Mike, they were like, oh, we have all these people here doing presentations, so what if we put?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
What if we put?
Yes.
A and B, we move A and B down to right before K, or right after K?
Yeah, that's fine.
Whatever. Okay, so.
Close session. Stand by. So, your motion, Mike, is to move K, which is?
Discussion of school finance.
Stand by, let me find it. Discussion of school finance, you would like K to be in, you would like 8K to become 8A.
Nope, I would just say, instead move 8A and B after 8K.
Move 8, so move the closed session to be after 8K.
Nope.
Closed session is before any of that?
Move 10A and B after 10K. Apologize for the confusion.
Yeah, so move 10A and B after, say it one more time?
10K.
Okay, so we would have closed session and approval of exempt staff contracts and administrative contracts after our discussion of school finance. Correct? That's the request.
I'm indifferent about closed session. The only thing is, well.
Closed session needs to occur prior to the approval of the contracts, so.
Yes.
Okay, so, motion is to move closed session and reconvening into open session, followed by the new business, A, approval of administrator compensation and contracts for '24, '25, and approval of exempt staff contracts compensation '24, to now be after K, discussion of school finance.
Yes.
Okay, so motion by Mike, and do you second that, Teresa?
Sure, I don't, I'm.
Good. By voice vote, all those in favor of amending the agenda? Aye, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Okay, agenda is amended. I would now entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda for this evening.
Don't move.
Mike, is that?
Was that Mike? Yeah.
Yep, I'll second it.
Okay, I've got, I've got a motion by Terry and a second by Mike. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay. We've got the most complicated part of the meeting over with.
(laughing).
Now, we're going to move on to recognition, so we get to showcase some good work from a couple of our, from one student and one staff member that were unable to join us in April, and we're going to start off with the high school.
All right, we are lucky enough to have Carly Bull with us, who's now a graduated senior, so that shows you kind of the person that she is, to be able to come back in late June and still come and let us honor you. I know this is one of your favorite things to do, right? For us to talk about you. But Ms. Purnat, who Danielle Purnat actually nominated Carly, and she couldn't be here tonight, she's at a conference, I believe, up in Oshkosh, but we wanted to go ahead with this, so we asked Mrs. Anderson if she would come on up and talk about Carly and kind of read what Ms. Purnat nominated her for.
All right, Carly, these are Ms. Purnat's words, and I'll do my best here. Carly's welcoming nature, desire to learn, and charming personality has made it a pleasure getting to know her as an agriculture student. She always performs academically and puts forth extra effort on all assignments and projects in her coursework, striving to do her absolute best and show learning in a unique way. Carly is always willing to lend a helping hand to other students and give up personal time to further benefit those around her. Carly is one of the most honest, dependable, and trustworthy students I have ever had the pleasure of dealing with. Her dependability and trustworthy nature have led her to success in the youth apprenticeship program with Casey Landscaping. Furthermore, it is Carly's overall character that make her a prime candidate for Student of the Month. And I'll add that I knew you back as a freshman, and I would echo these same things from those days of Key Club, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mrs. Austin.
Carly, I'm Nikki with the Board of Education, and I have known you for a very long time, and I'm so excited and proud for you and all that you've accomplished so far. We're so excited for all that you're going to accomplish in the years to come, so congratulations. You are so welcome. Here's a certificate to honor this evening, and a gift certificate for you, and congratulations. Thank you.
All right, we also have Mrs. Anderson, who happens to be here. She was our Staff Excellence Award winner in May, and was unable to be here at that time, so since then, she's been doing one in New York and a few other things, so she keeps herself pretty busy with her family here. But we wanted to honor Susan because honestly, she's been invaluable to the work that we do with the high school, and honestly, through the district, and I'll talk a little bit about that. We just talked about some of her plans for next year, so it's fresh on my mind, but one of the big things she does is she's a teacher coach for us with our PLC model. She not only coaches the teams to be able to work together effectively and efficiently, but then also to help them start reflecting on their practices and offering different ideas about practice and strategies they might use in the classroom, and she has this uncanny ability to do that without the conflict, whereas if a I was coming in the room, she can do that and kind of help them see that a little bit themselves and lead them towards that. So that's been a huge, huge help, and she's really a big part of the why we've had a lot of success with that. And then, our multi-tiered system of supports, systems of support that we've had, this year we've implemented at the high school, she's been really big in that too, specifically the academic team, kind of helping us set different tiers of support and what are identifying criteria for how kids get in there, and then leading some younger people, I would say, our new interventionists in that process, and then hopefully, they'll be able to take over more and more of that, but Susan's been integral in that. And then, one of the biggest, biggest things that I think we've been doing is evidence-based grading, and Todd, you can speak to this as well, but Susan's been a huge part in this. She's a nonstop learner, she's always reading the book, she's always, hey, I'll jump on this webinar, I'll do this or that, and bringing, bringing information back, but that's the kind of person she is, she's always striving for, how can we make this or anything else better? And then, outside of that, you know, it's not just that, it is also, Susan sets up all of our, not all of our, I should say, but a lot of our, like, staff baby book showers, and she runs Fine Arts Festival with another staff member. I mean, she's always got her hands on something and going and going, I honestly don't know how you do it, because obviously, you've got some things going on at home as well, but we really, really just appreciate you, and this is long overdue, so congratulations.
I appreciate it.
Susan, from the, from the Board of Education, again, we can't thank you enough, we're thrilled to have you here tonight to honor you, all the efforts that you put forward to create a loving, caring environment for not only our students, but for all of your coworkers, to help build them up and, and give them an opportunity to be better, so that we can all be better for our students. So, we really appreciate all the hard work that you do, we know it's a lot of, a lot of extra time and dedication to the district, so from the Board, it's my pleasure to present you with this plaque, congratulations, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. When Jeremy told me this, I guess in May, I was completely floored, like, totally and utterly shocked, so I just wanted to say thank you. This has been a really interesting role for me, it's been different and fun and challenging, but also, it sort of fits, like, I feel like I'm in the right spot, and I am so grateful for that. It's expanded, you know, I was in my English teacher bubble for a long time, and that was great, and now I am seeing 612 work and K-12 work, and I get the great privilege of working with the administrative team, who are all amazing, even though I don't see all of them as much as I would like to, so I just, I just want to say thank you to them because they encourage me and challenge me and give me things to wrestle with, and that's what helps me grow and kind of lights me up, so I really appreciate this, thank you. Again, I was really surprised, but thank you for this and for the team, for everything that they do to wind me up and turn me loose at work, so, thank you.
All right, congratulations again, and if we could get both of our award winners up to the front, Ms. Bochard will get some photos.
You both look great, so you're not.
Blend in. Oh, boy, we're real close.
Sorry.
James.
Congratulations.
You too.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Great.
A little bit of ice cream?
Oh, roast.
I just got some. It was motivation to sit still and quiet.
All right, they did a great job.
Thank you.
All right, move on to our consent agenda. Do any Board members wish to remove an item for individual consideration? Hearing none, we're approving the Board of Education meeting minutes from 6:10, 2024. Approval of support staff hiring, Susan Langmeyer, Northside Educational Assistant, and Janessa Newingham, High School LMC Assistant. Approval of professional staff resignation, Carrie Steinman, Middle School Special Education Teacher. Approval of professional staff hiring, Alexis Lee, Parkside First Grade Teacher. Approval of the District Administrator Goals. Approval acceptance of community donations, Mary Ann and Howard Johnson, $30 to the Backpack Buddies. Entertain a motion.
Someone?
Second.
Can I, can we have a discussion? I'm confused as to what, do you mean just the content of the goals? Because there's no goals, just the actual, just the, I'm confused.
The goals as defined by the statute and the new framework, they're in as an executive content, so the, the content, the methods will be shared with the Board through communication from the District Administrator.
So these are just the numbers?
They're the numbers and the.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Can I record you a second?
Yep.
I thought so.
So I've got a motion by Nikki and a second by Eric. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Motion carries. Public comment, we have nobody signed up for a public comment at this time, no old business. Okay, we're going to move on to what is now 10A in the agenda, was 10C. So, this is going to be a discussion of the North Road access for the new high school project, and we're going to start getting into the capital projects portion of the meeting, and buckle up, this one, this is going to take a while, we've got a lot to do tonight, so. We've got several items in the agenda regarding both the high school project and Abraham Lincoln, so we're going to be considering, in this order, alternate access agreement to the north for the new campus, community lift station agreement, guaranteed minimum price for Abraham Lincoln work, design development, or DD, executive summary and budget update, and then, consideration for approval of bids tonight for building excavation, asphalt, curb and gutter, and grandstand and bleachers. First up is the approval of the contract for the road to the north of the new high school campus. Is Bill joining us tonight?
With the change in the agenda, Bill was not anticipating being here this early, so he is joining us, but obviously, he's not here yet.
Okay, do you know what time he's planning on joining us? We can hold off for a little bit.
He was, yeah, he was anticipating sometime between 7:30 and 7:40 he would be here.
Okay, I think we probably want to have Bill here for that, so I'm going to ask for a motion to take a 15-minute recess, and we'll reconvene at 7:35 PM. Somebody would like to make that motion?
Should we do that, Rich, or should we just move on to the GMP and the building project update?
Do you have a, do you have a desire to take these in a specific order?
No, they can, they can go in any order. Having the attorney here, because he drew up the agreements, would be.
Absolutely, we need to have.
So we, we could go right to the GMP.
Okay.
So we need to amend the agenda.
Well, the, the agenda's already been approved, so what we'll do is, we will, we will come back to C, which is now A, and B, the approval of the community lift station, we'll come back to those when Bill is with us, so this Let's go into discussion of the guaranteed maximum price for the Abraham Lincoln project, and capital improvements project, that's, again, as a reminder, the capital improvements project approved by the voters, that's continuing over the summer. Not far enough long to have guaranteed maximum price, or a not-to-exceed guarantee, you've got Todd Kirchmaier here from CG Schmidt with us tonight to walk us through the GMP, correct?
Todd, are you doing that, or is Tony?
It's Tony, Tony's doing that, okay, thank you.
So the GMP amendment you have in front of you is just an amendment to the consensus doc or owner contract that's already set in place for the Abraham Elementary and the, the high school, so it's amendment number one, cover sheet, and then there, the backup, which you see in front of you, includes a number of exhibits, so typically, just like we did for Northside and Parkside, we've got an exhibit that identifies the drawings and the specifications upon which the guaranteed maximum price is based on, any assumptions and clarifications that we bring, bring forth, approximate schedule, or the schedule of construction work, statement of self-perform work, and the schedule of values, which is really just a breakdown on the GMP, so I will say that I don't intend to get into any detail on this GMP unless there are questions, but if you recall, a few months ago now already, I think, we came forth with the budget for the Abraham Elementary project, and the, the numbers stayed the same. The numbers at that time were, there was a base bid and four or five alternates, at that board meeting, we approved the base bid plus alternate number four, the other alternates were omitted. So what we did is took the base bid plus alternate number four, bunched it all together, created our schedule of values, and backed out the contract amount that the district has with PRA, because that's the one difference from Northside Elementary to this project, is that the school district holds the contract for PRA, the architects, CG Schmidt does not hold that, so we, we took that total project budget that we presented, backed out that $85,000 or whatever it was, and that's what the dollar amount is represented here on this GMP, guaranteed maximum price. Do you have anything to add, Ron, or Fig?
No, we, yeah, we, we're holding the contract separately with PRA for this project, and so that's, we, when we set up both contracts, we wanted the high school and A to be similar, both Parkside and Northside, when they were done, were just all under the umbrella of CG Schmidt.
So I think we're just seeking approval of the GMP for, for signature?
So the, so the GMP is currently at 3.154 million?
Yep.
And then, the contract held outside of the GMP with PRA, what is the cost of that, Ron?
I believe that's $84,700.
$84,700?
Yep.
Okay. Questions, discussion from the Board? All right, as the project comes to a close, I know that we had, was it 3.4, 3.6 budget for the, for Abraham Lincoln?
I believe we were at 3.4, is that accurate, Ron?
I would defer to Todd on that, to be honest.
Yep, it is, it was 3.4, and then, in the total project budget that Huffman Keel's doing of all of the referendum, they've now adjusted it to the 3154, and then applied the PRA number up above in the, in the owner or, or design section of, of the total project budget.
Let's include in South costs, building permit, owner contingency, and then, that's basically it.
Any additional questions or conversation? Entertain a motion, if somebody would like to make it?
Don't move.
On all at once.
Second. Sorry.
So the motion is to approve the guaranteed maximum price summary for the Abraham Lincoln project as presented. Additional conversation or discussion around it before we vote? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all those opposed, nay? Motion carries. I'm looking at the content for the building project update, it specifically includes discussion about the North Road and other items, so I think we need to probably hold until Bill gets here. Entertain a motion to recess until 7:48 PM?
Oh, he's here.
Oh.
Perfect timing, Bill.
Great job, Bill.
How you doing this evening? We're going to, we're going to throw you right into the thick of it, so we are just about to start a discussion about approval of the North Road access for the new high school project. Come on up.
So, Bill, the agenda was amended, and some things are taken, were taken, moved to lower it later in the agenda, so.
Screw you.
You're not actually late.
Thanks for coming early.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
Okay, so we're going back up to C.
Yep. So, up first on this portion is the approval of the contract for the road to the north of the new high school campus. Board Legal Counsel Bill Fay here is joining us tonight, so welcome back, Bill. I know that both you and Fig have been working on this one for a while, and I know you guys are probably pretty excited to tell us more about it, so I'm going to turn this over to you, Fig, to walk us through it.
Yep, so I'll, I'll go ahead and get it started. So, on Thursday last week, the district and BNS came to verbal agreement on an alternate access to the new high school campus from the north property that they purchased this last year, and then, as of really today, we had approval through their legal to go ahead and to bring this forward to the Board for approval. So, I'll let Bill kind of get into some of the, the details or questions you might have, but basically, what we were doing is, we were providing a dollar amount for them to provide a road, and so we're going to pay toward the construction of the road, and they are going to provide the road. And with that also includes coming off of, by the Justice Center, coming off on Sixth Street, and bringing that road on the opposite side of the well, going through the section of Northside, that road will also be constructed by BNS, and then go across 32nd, trying to think what the avenue is here, 32nd, and then, onto that north property, and then drops into the high school campus. So it would be for the complete construction of that road, so they are providing the road, and we are providing the dollars toward the road.
So to be clear, though, what's, what's the legal, so what is the contractual change or amendment? How is that structured? So we understand exactly.
So you recall, the contract with BNS calls for the construction of a private drive south connecting with KK. Construction of that private drive would be at the school district's expense, it would require maintenance, it'd be a private drive, require maintenance over time, and this agreement, and of course, at the time that that contract was signed, Beaters Spedall didn't own the property of the north, much less have any concept of developing it, so this is an opportunity that is opened up for the district to work with Beaters Spedall to provide this ultimate access, which we think is more desirable to the school district, the public, and the kids. The, you know, the, Beaters Spedall's going to have a few hoops to jump through, they've got to enter a new development agreement, they've got to get plan approval through the city, they're going to have to install that road in a timely way to meet the deadlines of the school district for opening a new school. If that all works out, we're going to be relieved of the response, the district is going to be relieved of the responsibility of constructing that private drive to the south, and essentially, trade the dollars that that would have cost for the contribution toward the cost of a more desirable route of access. If it doesn't work out, we reserve all rights to go construct that road to the south if we have to, but indications are, at least as far as I can tell, that this should all work.
And Bill, this, to be clear then, this would ultimately end up being a city street.
Correct, yeah, so the city would have the responsibility for snow removal and maintenance, it would have curb and gutter, sidewalks, street trees, street lights, require, comply with the requirements of the city codes.
Okay.
Would we maintain the easement going to the south? Like, if?
Would not.
Okay.
Now, Beaters Spedall, I, we understand their plans maybe to install that road themselves, that would be at their expense. If it's a private drive, we wouldn't have the right to use it, but could discuss that if there's reason to, with Beaters Spedall, at some point, that may become a public street as well, but this would be in lieu of the responsibility, the right and the responsibility for improvement of that southern route.
And as a part of the agreement, we would be granting an easement to the city through existing land on the north, the far north portion of the Northside plot that we have currently.
Yeah, at no expense for installation of the road through that strip, we just grant the right of way to enable the construction of the thoroughfare.
And this would cap the liability to the district for construction of a road, because this then places construction of the road to city specs with BNS and the city, so they have to come to.
Correct.
To a development agreement, and we are freed of the additional possible liability of cost overruns or whatnot with any other possible road that would have to be constructed.
So do we know with the, you know, we had to connect the traffic study, part of the construction project with the road going to the south was intersection improvements on 31st, like, we wouldn't be responsible for anything that came from a new traffic study showing that, that traffic coming from a different direction?
So we, we have an agreement with the city for that intersection of 13th and 31st, and we have a maximum amount of dollars of, of $250,000 we'd put toward the improvement of that intersection when the city does that, so that, and that's it, that's the maximum liability we would have at that intersection.
But now that access to our site has changed to the north rather than the south, I assume, well, I guess I shouldn't assume, it's, it's possible the city would make whoever's the engineer for Beaters Spedall do a new traffic study showing the shift of traffic, if there's any requirements for intersection improvement related to that, we're not liable for any of that?
It's done them both ways, so that's already been completed, that was done before the agreement.
So that, and that's it, that's the maximum liability we would have at that intersection.
But now that access to our site has changed to the north rather than the south, I assume, well, I guess I shouldn't assume. It's possible the city would make whoever's the engineer for Bader Spedahl do a new traffic study showing the shift of traffic. If there's any requirements for intersection improvement related to that, we're not liable for any of that?
It's done them both ways, so that's already been completed. That was done before the agreement with the city.
Yes, now that you said that, I do remember that.
So regardless.
Actually, the north axis provides better traffic flow than the south.
Right. Thank you, Ron. I forgot that was in there earlier.
Okay. Additional questions, comments, discussion around possible road to the north?
Just a question about like item D, Eighth and a Half, Eight and a Half Street, twenty. Any like costs or anything, it's just basically a disclaimer that that may happen? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
So this would extend along the north side of the north perimeter of the school site. It would be a street that would be half on the school site and half on Bader Spedahl's property. It would tie into their plant as they're developing their plant, it'd become a public street. The plant's approved according to expectations. Understand that the school board would be paying, the district would be paying for its share of that street, and Bader Spedahl would be paying for its share. That's a public street that would serve the school site, of course. There's a little connect, little strip that would have to, we'd have to grant an easement to the school district to connect to that southern route if the, if Bader Spedahl, BNS decided to improve that southern route. We'd agree to do that, just a small strip. There was a question that was, that arose during negotiations or discussions with them last week. What if the city, the city doesn't approve that street or doesn't get installed right away? Well, in that case, I understand, we've budgeted the cost for that street. We're committed to installation of it. It has to be private for a while, it'll be private for a while, but they're gonna pay their share, and we're gonna pay our share of the construction cost.
Just absolute clarity, one-time payment, we get access to the north, no extra ever?
Well, it's payable in two installments, but it's a flat fee, a lump sum payment to Bader Spedahl for our contribution toward the cost of that northern route.
Okay.
We're avoiding the cost of constructing the southern route then, trading dollars.
Yes.
And it's a lump sum amount, correct?
Okay.
They're responsible for installing the road, they're responsible for cost overruns or complications with construction.
If they aren't on time doing it, we have the right to build it for them, and then what we?
No, if they, if they're not on time, they may not get their approvals. We've built in timelines in the agreement, so if they've got in or into their development agreement, if they enter into development agreement, they're gonna have to file surety bonds to assure the city that the work's gonna be done. We've got triggers in there, and the event that the timelines aren't met, we've got the right to go to Plan B, which is that southern route, and not pay them for that northern route. But it's in their interest, you know, I think the dynamics are good. It's in their interest to put that into work with us, to get that done in a timely way. They seem pretty committed to that.
Okay.
The cost for entry into the agreement is equivalent to the, the expected cost to build the road to KK? The southern route, what is it?
Yeah, so that, that fell within the budgeted dollars that we had inside the estimated budget of dollars, correct?
Okay. All right. Additional questions, comments?
Well, I think it's very attractive that curb and gutter and street lighting, all the code requirements are done. It's not our responsibility.
It's the maintenance and the liability risk as well.
And snow removal is, it's, it's an attractive opportunity.
I think so, too.
And so I would make a motion.
Okay, got a motion by Phil?
Second.
And a second by Dylan? To approve the North Road access for the new high school project. Any additional conversation or comments before we vote? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, next item is approval of participation in a community lift station for the new high school project. Another item that, you know, Fig's been working pretty hard on recently, and I'm gonna turn it over to you to walk us through this one as well.
So this, this was, they wanna develop the property to the north, and it's been annexed into the city, and they're, they're planning it right now, and they're doing the planning, they're looking to bring in development, obviously. And one of the things would be to put in a lift station. So they'd been in conversations with the city and with the school district to do a community lift. The city has some requirements that a private lift wouldn't have. The city requires a building over the top, they require a generator, they require certain sizing. They also look at how it ties in for a potential titter-tiff. So at one point, the city, they did, it wasn't, it wasn't far enough along for them to partner with the city at that point. So what they did is they said they would partner with us. So when we did our bid pack, we, we asked for an allowance, we asked for an alternative bid if we didn't put the lift station on the school property. And when we sized out the pumps properly and the piping, we had a $207,000 allowance that we would have to put toward a community lift station. So, so they are, the agreement would be, they are providing that lift station, and we are providing $207,000 toward the construction of that lift station. And then what Bill did is he built in a timeline and assurances that it's done at a certain time, and, and we have that operational before we have to get our occupational permit or we have to use the school.
Okay.
So to clarify a couple of Fig's points, then, obviously, if we go to the community lift station, it takes away some of the onus for us to maintain that lift station if it's on our property. As he said, the $207,000 allowance is tapping the cost at what it would have been had we did it ourselves. By not doing that, that's what the savings were that we could have applied toward a community lift station that then we wouldn't have to maintain forever, so. It benefits us to have a, a community lift station, and we're, our caps are capped by the same amount that it would have been if it was on ours, right, Phil? Or Fig, you've been doing it predominantly, so.
Correct.
So we wouldn't have any maintenance that would be required.
Correct.
It'd be a municipal utility or a municipal utility system, that's correct.
I assume you gentlemen have had the chance to review these timelines, and it works with, with the construction schedule?
I don't recall the timeline specifically, but I know Carl's been involved.
I think the timeline works out very well. So we'll have all of that installed before we open the doors of this project, so.
Unlike the, the roads, this, we don't have the benefit of, if this doesn't work, we can just go backwards, because we're burying those site utilities much, much earlier in the project.
So what are the assurances built into the contract, Phil?
Well, there again, we've got engineers talking to each other. We've gotta make sure this is all on, being done on a timely way. We've got the remedy of negating the contract and going our separate way if need be. And we've got the benefit of some time to redesign if need be. But we've got engineers working with each other to push to get this done. And again, they've got incentives to work with us on this.
The assurance that's built in there would be if they're not able to provide it in a timely way and we have to. Our, it would be the cost, the assurance would be their cost minus our $207,000 contribution.
They pay for the damages. And we put a private lift station, we designed a private lift station onto our site, they'd pay for the difference.
And the private lift station would be in line with the utilities that are being constructed, I guess?
It would, it would have to be to Mike's question, yeah.
Mike's question.
Yep, it would have, so once we run the gravity lines to the northeast, then we'd be looking at that low northeast point to put, put in the, the force main and the lift.
Four B is the area in the contract where it talks about the responsibility for Bader Spedahl to cover those.
So they have agreed to be liable for any and all damages beyond the $207,000 if for some reason they can't come to an agreement with the city and, or a development agreement, and the lift station does not get constructed.
Can't meet the timeline.
Okay. So we're still left alone? Because that could, that could be possible. Okay.
Yeah, well, I just want, there, there still would have to be, there will still have to be a little bit of a force main and a grinder pump that would go from the softball baseball field down to Thirty-first, because that can't be gravity to the, to the location to the northeast. So that's factored into the costs already, so I just wanted that, that wasn't mentioned, and that's kind of an important point, so.
Yeah, that was built into the net.
It's built into the numbers, and then the softball, baseball will have, it'll go to a grinder pump and a force main up to Thirty-first, so that, that still stays. Versus before, the lift station was gonna go right through that area, and we would have just tied onto it, so.
So, to me, it sounds like it's a mutually beneficial agreement. District is contributing only the expected or budgeted amount to install their own lift station. The ongoing maintenance of the lift station is, is no longer the sole responsibility of the district. It's now going to be a city-owned utility. And there's language in the contract that protects the district should BNS and the city be unable to come to terms on a development agreement.
Yes, we can on all those fronts.
Okay. All right. Additional questions or conversation on this one? Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Motion by Eric, second by Mike. Motion is to approve the community lift station for the new high school project. Additional conversation or questions before we vote? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Appreciate all your work.
Yes, thank you.
We've already carried for the guaranteed maximum price. We're now gonna move on to the overall building project update. So these actions continuing in the next set of agenda items. First, we're gonna have CG Schmidt, I believe, walk us through the design development, DD's stage of budget and executive summary. Is that correct?
Yeah, we can, go ahead and start, yep. So we're gonna, Todd, you're gonna, okay.
So we, we've created an executive summary of kind of where, where we're at. The original target budget was around 82.2 million. This would just be the construction portion, not the soft costs. Huffman Keel's managing the total cost budget, and we can touch on that after we go through the construction, but. So right now with, there are some items that are on the, on the next, coming up in the agenda that are included in there. But as of right now, we have about 70%. We have pricing on 70% of the project with 30% left, and we are currently running about $93,000 under budget on the construction, the building construction project. So that, that's where we stand right now. That's keeping the, keeping our contingency at two and a half percent. And then there is another owner contingency that's being, again, carried in the soft cost budget of $1 million. That's mentioned on the bottom, bottom of the executive summary. There are a few, few things that we have pricing on from subcontractors but are yet to bid. And I'll just highlight some of the, the large ones that are left. We do, we have the, the maintenance shed that has to be priced out. We have our carpentry and millwork that need to be priced out. Roofing is a large one that is still to be bid, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be saying bidding. We haven't priced out as far as hard bidding. Doors, frames, and hardware, glazing, gypsum board, and then basically just finishes. You know, paint, tile, ceilings, flooring, epoxy, wood flooring. So those, those are kind of the large items that are left to be bid out in the next package that's coming out, I think July 10th or so, 12th, 12th, sorry, July 12th. So then that'll be, those will be going on the street for the remainder of the project, and then we would be 100% bid out when that package comes back and ready for the GMP then, at that point.
When do you think those will come in?
Approximately. The bids will come in probably the first week of September, first or second week of September, and then we need a couple of weeks to get them together, and then present them here to the board. So hopefully, we can get it to a situation where we just present the rest all at once and be done, and then and then start talking about entering into a GMP.
First or second week of August, you're talking about, right? Because we'd have it on our own July 15th or so, and then it would be three, first or second week of August.
Then it'll be a couple of weeks to get it back to the board, so it'll be off the start of September, probably, when you'll be coming back to us, I guess.
Sorry about that, I missed, I meant August, not September, I'm sorry.
So overall, I think we've had, you know, we've had some ups and some downs, we're still seeing ups and downs, and you'll see that when we go into the next steps, but we're, we're still trending at, at budget or even a little bit below. So we've had favorable, you know, both numbers of bidders, and, and the dollars have been, been pretty positive, so. We, we are, we're trending exactly where we need to be, I think, at this point.
And I'd just like to reiterate, back to the 70 and 30%, just to kind of circle back on that. I mentioned that at the last meeting. Seventy percent of the number has been accounted for, whether that's CG Schmidt's portion with their management and general conditions, fee insurance, contingency, you know, those aren't necessarily bid, but they're pretty solid and accounted for. We have all the other bids that we presented to you folks, that's in that same bucket. We have a fair amount of other categories, which a couple of them will be, a few of them will be presenting tonight, but we have bids back on some of those. We're just trying to get that all formalized and to you for approval. So that 70% includes bids that you haven't seen necessarily, but we got bids from folks. And what Todd's team really did is focused on that 30%, which was the finishes, and kind of did an updated estimate with input from subcontractors on the drywall and studs and stuff like, like Todd had mentioned, to kind of round out to get to that 100%.
So and we, and at this stage, we still, even though we just did it like in, you know, February, March, we went back through the plans, another full 100% takeoff of everything. We retake off all the doors, all the flooring, all the walls, it was all retaken off and, and then adjusted the unit prices, so. We, you know, everything that's shown on the plans that, from the, from the schematic design drawings to the development, or design development drawings, we've accounted for all of those changes, so.
You have?
You have.
We have, yes, yeah.
Questions, conversation?
Do you have a schedule update? How, now that we've started excavation and the, the mass grading, how is it going?
We're losing a little time on some of the weather here, to be honest with you, with the mass excavation, but we're starting to, Dylan's here, he's working on, on really developing that sequence of the structure in the enclosure. Since a lot of the enclosure is, is precast concrete, we intend on making up for this during the enclosure part of the project. So I don't, we're not alarmed on the overall duration at this point in time. We'll have ups and downs on that throughout the project as well, and we don't believe there's any reason to be too alarmed yet. But yeah, we are seeing a little bit of a delay in the earthwork that we've done so far.
You haven't run any site conditions that were unexpected yet?
No, I don't think so.
You have anything additional, Fig?
Yeah, just, just a few things, just some of the, or the housekeeping, so they did get the safety fence up like last week, so that's up and around the site and gated. The water main is gonna be coming in off of Thirty-first half, so the main water. So we just talked about the North Road access that's gonna replace our KK Road access. Now that the board has agreed to that, we're gonna be sharing a lift station by providing an allowance to, and, and going in that direction, and Todd also mentioned baseball, softball, we'll have our own grinder pump and force main for that area, and then the gravity will be from the high school that'll go to that northeast and go to that community lift. So Huffman Keel has sent out an RFP for furniture services, so that went out last week. PRA has been fine tuning a lot of the planning for the equipment items in the gym locker rooms, commons, the new M room, the PAC, fitness and weight training areas, et cetera, so they're fine tuning those things to make sure we have all the stuff ready for some of these last bid packs. Abe is on schedule, obviously, we, we just approved the GMP today, which is great news. I'm sure Sarah's gonna be happy to get into her new building when school starts, maybe a little, little bit before. Can you get her in, like a week before, you think?
No comment. You can't, but yeah, we're, we're trending ahead of schedule at the, at the moment, so, thank you.
Yeah, so site excavation has kind of been, been focused more like on the center of the, of the area, right?
Yeah, so the, the focus has been, number one, get the access wrote into where the, the trailer setup's gonna be. Two, develop the ponds, which if anybody, if anybody's been by the site, you can look to the south end of the site and see some of the retention ponds that are there that are filled up with water with this nice. with this nice little rain you had over the last few days. So there's some water in there. And then the next focus is the building footprints. So you see a lot of the, a lot of the cuts and fills kind of happening in the middle of the site. There's not a whole lot happening at the southwest of the site by the ball fields or the southeast of the site by the playing fields, the soccer fields or the football fields. That's because we're focusing all efforts on the building pad so we can move towards foundation excavation and footings.
So and then, and then later on in the agenda tonight, we're going to go through four main areas that are left that we have some bids for the board's order review and approve, so.
All good news so far. I like, I like eighty-eight thousand under budget. That's, that's fantastic, so. You thinking for the, for the next bid package coming through? Are you guys seeing trends in the industry, at least for those ones? Or they coming in about what you thinking or?
I think it's been stable, more stable than it has, so that's positive. I think we've seen the size of this project being larger. There's, there's been more interest, so that's, that's a positive, too. So and we are, we are working on some additional ways to break out some of the other buildings into smaller pieces so that we can get additional local participation on those. So the concession stand at baseball, softball, concession stand at the football soccer complex, and then there'll, there'll be some concrete work associated with the tennis storage and ticket booth that are going to be tech ed projects. Get them to run. Jeremy? Jeremy's got to correct me on that.
Well, building, building trades.
Building trades. Yeah, sorry, sorry. Sorry. So yeah, so we have some, some ability there to break out into small, oh, and the maintenance shed, there'll be, there'll be things there. So we have the ability to break out some of those separately and get the additional input, but while keeping the main school and that, you know, that bigger piece to keep the, you know, the contractors that want to be more aggressive. So I, we've been trending positively. I think things have been fairly stable, so I think that's good news. But we obviously want to get a bid out and get them approved and under contract as soon as possible so that we don't, you know, get some kind of inflation or something, just don't know. But it, it has been stable, so that's positive.
Yeah, we will get to a point, just like we did with Abe, where we'll have the discussion, we'll have a GMP for the project.
And then add a little more flavor to that, too, so. Lost my train of thought again. The, you were speaking about the, this is embarrassing, sorry. Brad skipped me on that one, sorry. No, the outbuildings that we're going to talk about. So there, there are some things like site concrete, for example. We got one bidder on that, so we're going to sit tight instead of, not sit tight, we're not going to present that as one bidder to the group. So we're developing an alternate strategy to get more participation. Some of the site concrete will actually involve some of the foundations for some of those buildings Todd was talking about, also some of the foundations for the athletic equipment, things like that. So it kind of made that a little, I shouldn't say messy, just a lot of odds and ends, right? It might not be attractive to somebody that wants to bid site concrete. So we're going to try to break that out and do its own little bucket of miscellaneous stuff and get all the, the real true, what we call site work sidewalks and pavement and all that stuff in its own category, so hopefully we see better bid results. So we're kind of working through different opportunities like that where we see things that come over. I remember now, so the main part of, what I wanted to communicate was the fact that we're, you know, under budget, we're on budget here, right? And a lot of the things that we have presented to you as a board, a lot of the packages have been coming under budget, significantly under budget. And that trend has been great so far. You'll see today, there's going to be another one that's over budget, but there are other ones that are over the budget that we're accounting for. So this would be a lot less if, if we had, if we didn't have some of those overages. So I just wanted to kind of give fair warning. Again, I mentioned at the last meeting that we have a lot of good positive news here with some categories coming under budget. There are a few that are over budget that are counteracting that. We're kind of coming out balanced at the minus ninety-three thousand right now.
I'd just like to add to that, to reach there. This is very normal in the bidding world. You get some up and some under and you shoot for that even ground, which we're, we're at right now with ninety-three thousand under budget, so we're feeling very good.
All right. We can move on to approval of the first bid package unless there's additional questions from the board conversation. Okay, so the first one that we've got on our list here is approval of the earthwork. So we've got summary and then excavation details attached to our board packets. Would you like to walk us through some?
Yep, I can do that. So we got four categories we're going through, and the first one on the agenda is excavation. So what, how this differs from bid package one? Bid package one was mass excavation utilities, if you remember that, one of the first bid packages I presented on, that not include excavation of the actual building itself because the drawings weren't developed enough to bid out that scope of work, you know exactly where the footprint and the footings were, how deep they were, what's the base underneath of there. None of that was defined, so we couldn't bid that out with that first package. So we were forced to kind of separate that and deal with that separately. And that's what we're dealing with right now. So the excavation of the building, the backfill of the building, any type of crushed stone and everything needed underneath the slab on grade, that's all a part of this. In addition, there's some work in the athletic fields that's also a part of this. So in the previous bid package, they had to stockpile topsoil as in their contract. Part of this contract is to take that stockpiled topsoil, shred it on site, and place it for the athletic fields. Also, there's some work under the turf system that's included in the scope, some of the base aggregates that are underneath the scope from subgrade up to the bottom of turf. And the turf is by another contractor. That scope's in here. Some, some sand at the lung jump pits, some stuff over at the shot put area, the, what do you call it, decomposed granite. Some of those odds and ends, I guess, are included in this earthwork package as well. So what you're seeing here is we, we had two bid results. You know, unfortunately, we had a big group of bidders on the first bid package, eight, if I remember right, both earthwork and utilities. So it was a little disappointing, to be honest, that we only got two bids. I reached out to a couple of people that we work with often, some union contractors that we work with often, and, you know, the response was contractors are already on site, they already got their equipment there, they're local. Why, why would I waste my time, put an effort towards bidding? Well, how should I be cost effective? So those are a couple of responses I got, and unfortunately, that's, is what it is. But these are the two bid results we received and are presenting for, for the folks to make the decision here today. I will speak a little bit to the amount that's over budget. So you can see, we had one point one identified for this. Ideal Midwest came in at one point eight million. Parasol came in at one point eight as well, about thirty thousand dollars higher. This is one of the ones that's over. But again, when you look at it as a big package and you look at the earthwork utilities for the first bid package, which was actually five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars under budget, and then you look at this one, which is seven hundred and eighty over budget, it's a net of two sixteen over, which is about three point three percent. So kind of like we looked at the MEPs as a group, you know, this, we looked at it the same way. Because when we allocate budgets for the, the first bid package versus this bid package, it's a bit of a science because when we're doing that, we're, we have Todd's group estimating as best as they can, cuts and fills and, and excavation and backfill. What we really do is rely on subcontractors to help us give a big picture look at the whole site package and tell us what it's going to cost. So Todd's group does his thing, we get a couple of numbers, we kind of make sure we're, they're all in the same realm, and then we hold a budget. But because we have some lump sum input from subcontractors, it's not clear cut on how you segregate that. So in the perfect world, we probably should have had more budget attributed to this, this second bid package, according to the first. I don't know if that's making any sense, but the big picture is you add them together, it's, site work as a whole, we're two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars over. Just so happens, this, this portion appears to be two hundred, or seven hundred and fifty over.
Where is, did E N N Hughes not bid this? They are the ones doing the mass excavating, right?
They did not. So E N N Hughes, they awarded the contract for earthwork and utilities first go around. E N N Hughes does the actual utility work itself. They subcontract out the mass excavation work. They subcontract out Ideal Midwest. Ideal Midwest bid this bid package directly, not through E N N Hughes.
This is the contractor already on site?
This is the contractor already on site, yeah.
That, that's a huge bonus because then that clears up any scope gap that there might be because it's the same guy and there always is a little bit of a scope gap that could be changed over and stuff coming down the road. So I'm, we're really happy Huffman Keel is to, to see that Ideal is a little bidder.
Is this hard bid or is this budgetary?
Thank you for bringing that up. These are all hard bid numbers. So all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing traders, or the trades that we did were trade management partner process. This is not that. These are hard bid lump sum contracts. We will be entering into contracts with these folks or these numbers. When I say we, I just will say that one more time, that CG Schmidt does not suggest, you know, we are, we are signatory to the unions, so we will not be holding any of these contracts. We can't because they're both non.
Huffman Keel's recommendation?
Huffman Keel's recommendation is go with the low bidder, Ideal Midwest.
If I'm not wrong, this is digging way back. Jesse Duffer Fairgram said there might be some stone that we hit in the corner of, one of the corners of the building excavation. Is that correct? And is that considered or accounted for in this bid?
It absolutely is, yes. We, like we did the first round, we, we scheduled a time for test holes to be dug in those strategic locations. As, as, as this was out for bid, all bidders were welcome to come. We then distributed those results via addendum, so there's enough information there for both bidders to recognize that and take, fund the full responsibility for the rock excavation. So we should not be seeing any surprises unless there's something way, way off base that doesn't represent any of our borings or any of our test holes. But I would say that from what I've observed on site, they're pretty consistent. So the, the bid numbers do reflect rock excavation.
You guys are pretty confident there's nothing they're going to run into that hasn't been accounted for?
You never know, working on the ground, but I think we've done as much as we really can, I will say, cost effectively. Between all the soil borings at the beginning of the job, I think there's fifty-two or fifty-eight of them. We did ten test holes, I want to say, for bid package one. We did another seven or eight, I think, for this bid package. I mean, I, I've, I've done this in the past and I've learned from shortcomings on those projects to know to spend that effort right now. And, and we've done it as best as we can at this point. You never know underground, you never know if we're going to encounter an old dump or something that might have, you know, what do you call it, soils, like contaminated soils. You, you just don't know that unless you happen to hit it with one of our test holes or soil borings. So I can't promise that there isn't anything below ground, but we're doing the absolute best we can, I think, at least the rest of the folks can, can add. But we've done everything we can to identify it and account for it and include it in the bids.
So Tony, because you brought that up, we did, we did investigate where there used to be a landfill or that, and that's not on that site. So that would be a true surprise if that turned up on the site. Yes.
A little bit of clarification, you, you talked about building excavation there. So they, they, the borings did show rock down there and they have all the rock excavation accounted for, but if they have to blast, that's still on them.
Yes.
So and we don't know that, they may not know that until they get into it.
They may be able to use a bad quote.
This is a hard bid, right? I run into something that's.
That's on, they're going to deal with.
Right.
All right. Any additional questions? Conversation on the earthwork foundation excavation bid package? Anybody care to make a motion?
Just for clarity, we're making a motion to approve Ideal Midwest as suggested.
However the motion is made, that would be the?
That is your suggestion, correct?
It's our recommendation. I would make that motion.
Okay. So I have a motion from Mike and a second by Phil to approve Ideal Midwest for the earthwork foundation excavation bid package for the new high school project. Questions, conversations before we vote? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Okay. Next item I have in front of me is the asphalt.
Yes, so asphalt bids, again, all these are the same thing. They're lump sum, hard bid numbers, so the ending in the contract with these folks as well. There were two different categories we wrote this out to, asphalt for the site, and that actually bid prior to this. We got two bids on that, and then asphalt for athletic fields. So what that is, is the asphalt base underneath the track, the asphalt base underneath the tennis court. There's some asphalt kind of in the, the baseball field complex. That's what we're calling asphalt for athletic fields, primary those three areas. They did kind of hold out on presenting those two in case there was kind of any combination deduct or advantage for the district. So that's why they're being presented together here. Please note, none of the bidders are willing to contract for one scope without the other. Really what it came down to is the athletic fields work is very precise, work with tight tolerances. They need to do very, very specific work and that is very tedious and can be, you know, a really financially risk item to, to do. So neither of the contractors are really willing to, they aren't willing to perform just the athletic field asphalt without the site asphalt. So when I heard that from both bidders, I said, okay, well, I have, I was going to split these and, and present them separately, now I can't, which I think is fine ultimately. So as a part of that process, Rock Road provided a twelve thousand dollar credit if they were combined, both the, the scopes. Payne and Dolan did not have that. So when you take the combined total, down at the bottom, we've got a budget of one point three four seven. And then Rock Road came in at a combined bid of one point three three one, and Payne and Dolan came in combined bid of one point four one six. So Rock Road is the, the low bidder on the asphalt.
Recommendations from Huffman Keel and administration?
Huffman Keel recommends that you award the contracts with a low bidder, Rock Road.
I, I agree with that recommendation.
Questions, comments, conversation from board members?
Is this also a contract that district holds or are they union?
They're union.
So you'll, you'll hold that one? Okay. And companies you're familiar with?
Oh, yep.
Just for clarity with the budget. This is where it gets confusing now that we approved taking that road to the south to KK out, that, where you have the budget of one point three four seven, did that include the road going south to KK? I, I see the bids excluded that asphalt that would be needed to go out to KK, which was a whole lot of asphalt, which I assume, I guess I'm asking, did, is that one point three four seven the original budget with the road to KK or is that?
South. South road to KK. So really, there would have been three asphalt categories. There was an asphalt category for the road on KK from site all the way to the KK. So what we've been doing, we got bid results on that, we just haven't presented it because of the ongoing negotiations here. So that bid package had its own budget and its own bids, and neither one of those are included in these categories. It's its own category, I just didn't present it because didn't.
Okay. And the money that's in those categories is the money that is the money that's going to, to the road to the north.
Okay.
The bunch of money for those is going to the road to the north.
Thanks for that clarity. There's no questions, conversation on this one? Entertainer motion if somebody would like to make it?
移到 Motion to where the contractor. A second.
Good motion by Teresa and a second by Nikki to approve Rock Road for the asphalt bid package for the new high school project. Questions, conversation before we vote? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Congratulations.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks for being here. Next up, we have approval of curb and gutter bid.
So curb and gutter. This was, this was bid for just the, the curb and gutter, so, you know, you see on the sides of the road, concrete curb and gutter. This is usually separated by CG Schmidt. We usually separate the curb and gutter work because that is a slip form machine type of install. You see a lot of it's undone on highways and city streets and things like that. You see a lot of it's undone on highways and city streets and things like that. Some people, you might hear site concrete, you think curb and gutter is included in site concrete, but we break it out because of that. Gives us better options and more competitive bidding for the curbs and the site sidewalk, kind of like what I was talking about earlier. So, that's what this is, is the curb and gutter. We have some of the curb and gutter on the private, and then we also have the curb and gutter on Eight and a Half Street. And then to kind of what Mike had mentioned about asphalt for KK, there was no curb and gutter on KK. So, there was no separate section for that. So, because of the type of work, we just included, you know, the whole site is one package. So, there's one curb and gutter package that you're, that we have, and you're seeing it right here. So, we got three bids on that. Raymond Cotell, the budget's 286, so this is another one we're over on, at least until I get to my next point here. Raymond Cotell is 336,000, Schultz 341, and Parisi 344. There's a little wrench to throw into this one for you all to think about. So, there's been discussions about the islands in the parking lot between the district and the city of Monroe. There's quite a few islands that are required per city code. So, a lot of those islands are formed by curb and gutter. There has been ongoing negotiations and talks about omitting a lot of that, which amounts to about 2,800 lineal feet. So, what we did prior to coming to bid, to come into this meeting here is we asked, we asked for them to rebid. We asked them to rebid with that 2,800 lineal feet out. So, that's what you see kind of in asterisks in the grid below. Alternate omit island curbs, that's what I'm talking about. Raymond Cotell offered a $46,000 credit, Schultz a $40,000 credit, and Parisi a $74,000 credit. If you look at it with the combined bids with the alternate, now it changes who is low. It is no longer Raymond Cotell. It is now Parisi. So, I will leave it to, I guess, Upman Keel and the District of Monroe, School District of Monroe, to kind of talk about the likelihood of that alternate happening that might help you decide one way or another.
As far as Upman Keel's concerned, the code that they had requiring all of these islands and stuff doesn't really work, and I think they originally had to set up for like big manufacturing facilities where they wanted islands in there. And so, here we come with this high school here, and the islands are a real impediment to the operation of the school with snow removal and drainage and things of that nature. So, you guys had worked with the city and asking them if they couldn't revise the code. They have, in fact, agreed that that is one of the codes that they're going to revise. But they still wanted the end cap islands that are on the ends of the parking. So, he's talking about 2,800 feet, lineal feet is the in-between part of that. And likelihood of that happening with city, in my mind, is 100%.
It's a process and it takes time.
Yes.
So, it's not just, it's not just a couple of meetings. It goes through committee and it looks at their code, and so it's a process. So, that's in process that they're looking at right now.
So, with that, and with that combined bid, that puts Parisi as low and Upman Keel recommends the district award to Parisi, which is a new contractor for this section.
And Carl, have you guys worked with Parisi before?
Oh, yes.
Tony? Yes. So, I mean, they're all high-quality contractors here. So, I would concur with Upman Keel's recommendation as well.
The bid without the alternate, alternate omitted is $8,000 higher than the low bid.
Correct.
So, that's your risk? It's an $8,000 risk.
Yep.
Pretty strong likelihood that this will be even.
Yeah.
Explain the. I'm seeing a little bit of a disconnect here where they're all within a few percent of each other on the base bid, but then Parisi's significantly more of a deduct. Did you guys vet that?
Did. So, I did some calculations. I was able to look at the initial bids and peel back some unit prices. One of the bidders provided the unit prices right on their bid. The other bidder didn't, but I was able to kind of do some math to kind of get a ballpark, right? So, I took what I considered what C.G. Schmidt expected to see based on my educated guess. We expected to see about $56,000 credit back on this. I got, we got less than that, of course, with Raymond Cotell and Schultz, but more than that with Parisi. So, I think Parisi was aggressive. One of the bidders, I did say, talked to Schultz. Their schedule is basically filled up. I mean, they could fit us in or a portion of our scope in this year yet. But I think that's probably why their bid, their revised bid wasn't as competitive. So, I think there's a couple of things going on there that really is out of my control and out of my, you know, you know, certain means and methods of how they bid the project, but that's what I did find. And then, you know, really, when you look at it, I looked at it as a fact of, okay, we expected to be $56,000. What is the district actually seeing on this credit? So, if you compare the 336 to the 270, you're actually seeing a $66,000 credit. The low bid from Raymond Cotell versus Parisi's low bid for 270. So, I think in, for those reasons, I think you're getting the right bang for your buck here as far as getting that rebid. It didn't, it didn't work against the district, and if anything, it worked for the district's favor.
Local, non-local, union, non-union?
They're all union, I believe. They are, right?
They're all union?
Parisi, I know is union. They're out of Verona. Schultz is out of Fort Atkinson. Cotell is out of Madison.
I know Parisi has quite a few people in the district that work there.
Rich, I'll make a motion to approve Parisi's.
Motion by Phil?
I'll second that.
Second by Nikki. To approve Parisi is the curb and gutter bid package, to approve the curb and gutter bid package to Parisi for the new high school project. Any comments or questions prior to voting? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Next item, the final bid package to review tonight is approval of grandstand and bleachers bid package.
Yes, so what this is, is the grandstands on the football stadium. That's the biggest piece of this. They design the system and stamp it and engineer and submit it to the state. They supply the materials. They assemble it all on site. That's what's represented in this scope. Also, there are some bleachers at the baseball fields, some little bleachers at the tennis. So, what this creates, basically covers is all your exterior bleachers. That's what we're bidding here. We got three bids, JW Industries, and then these are under budget, which is great. 1.090 for the budget. JW Industries came in at 816. A close second came Southern Bleacher. I was actually shocked. That's a pretty close spread with that, that type of order of magnitude for a contract. And JT Grandstands is just over a million bucks. So, to kind of give you a little bit more flavor on this, JW Industries is a Green Bay, Wisconsin company. So, they're more local than the others. Southern Bleacher is out of Texas, and JT Grandstands is out of Florida. I will also say that I talked to Fairgram, Jesse Duff over at Fairgram, because he wrote the spec for this. And the basis of design was JW Industries. So, JW Industries really knows the scope pretty well, and Jesse, the engineer, is pretty comfortable with them because they worked so closely together pre-construction to develop the design, since they were the basis of design. So, I think that's a plus for JW Industries. But yeah, I think that's, I think it's great that it's under budget, and we had two bids that were really close. That means the number's right. Any other questions on that?
Recommendation from Upman Keel?
Yeah. I personally have worked with JW Industries and Southern Bleacher on projects Verona and Upman Nina. Both of them are excellent bleacher contractors, and Upman Keel recommends that we award to a low bidder of JW Industries.
Administration?
Yeah, I would agree with that recommendation.
Questions, conversation?
Is this all new for everything, or does the district currently own anything at the existing site that we look at reusing?
These bid results are for all new.
All new.
That doesn't mean that some, I don't know, I haven't been in the heart of any conversations. I don't know if there are some.
Jeremy, what do we have for portable bleachers indoor or outdoor right now that are?
There are some portable ones that are at the tennis facility right now. There's bigger bleachers at baseball right now. I did talk, I don't know, it was in one of our design meetings with the architects, and I talked about, well, those look like they're in fairly good shape yet. Could we disassemble them and move them over? And they said, you cannot do that. Well, because then you have to get them recertified, and there's, it's a million nuts and bolts, and it's just not feasible to do that. It's easier and better to buy new. The portable ones, I think we could move over with the tennis courts, but we'll probably need more than those because we're going to have more courts.
Do you have any interior portable bleachers right now?
We have some that we sometimes borrow from Abe. We have in the past.
Okay.
Not a whole lot.
Yes.
We use them in the auxiliary gym right now, and we have summer tournaments.
The interior bleachers are not part of this package, so that would be.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for providing that, yes. This is exterior bleachers.
Okay. Comments, questions? Entertained a motion?
Struggling with this one just because we didn't take an inventory of what we had and what could be reused. So, we're not going to get back if we approve this, the value that they've got bid in it, right? I mean, yeah, we can say, okay, we're going to do a change order to take this section of bleachers out, but it's never a one-for-one when you're.
Yeah, I think, I think what they were talking about was the cost to reuse bleachers or relocate them is probably, probably close to.
Heard that, but I also heard there's some portable bleachers for the tennis courts that might take out some of the bleachers we might have.
There, I think we have three sets of really small, three-row, about eight foot long. So, we're going to need way more than that.
Just so you know, of this $816,000, roughly the breakout for the tennis area, was about $12,000. So, there isn't a big percentage of this bid for tennis court bleachers.
So, we do have it broke out. I think it's four, there was four, right? Four for $12,000 total or three? So, we know exactly what the value of them is. We have it broke out from them.
So, the large majority is at football and baseball.
Correct.
Point of curiosity, if bleachers are, if our existing bleachers are disassembled, moved, reconstructed, do they have to be recertified? Do they? Yeah.
That's a pretty big deal. I ran into that a year ago on a project up north where they had a bunch of football bleachers that they were going to try and reuse. And the cost to deconstruct them, bring them over and reconstruct them, get a, to find an engineer that would actually certify it and then submit it to the state was actually costing more than the actual new bleachers.
So, that would, that would apply to interior or exterior?
I don't know about the interior so much, but this applies to the outside bleachers that I have experienced with.
The football bleachers that we have now, those are considered part of the site, the fixtures on the site, correct? It's not something that we could even disassemble and take with us.
If they could want to, you would not. The football bleachers would not be able to.
But they're cemented into footings and they're part of the site.
So, they're, they're part of the site. It's part of the land swap and the facilities on the site, so I don't think that we can take them with us if we wanted to.
And they wouldn't work because the new bleachers are, it's based on a slope. You know, because we're coming in from the top and it's pitched slopes, so the bleacher design is based on that, on the, you know, going down the hill. So, their footings and everything are based on that and going into the pitch of that pitched area versus being in a flat area, which is what you would have at your current high school. Does that make, does that make sense?
It makes sense.
Feel better, Mike?
Yeah.
So, I would make a motion that we approve JW Industries for the exterior grandstand and bleachers bid package.
Motion by Nikki?
Is that good?
Is it Mike? To approve JW Industries for the grandstand bleachers bid package. Questions, conversation before we vote? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. That's all of them. Thank you, folks. Appreciate you. Yep, for sure.
Thank you, guys.
That's all. That's everything on the agenda about the project. Yes, thank you.
Have a good night.
Swiss house might be open.
Okay. All right. So, the next item we have is a discussion of school finance information. So, this is following up on the discussion from last meeting to approve our temporary operating budget and noted our projected operating deficit. So, Administration has prepared a detailed presentation, and I'll look back on school funding to better add color and context to some decisions that the board will need to make to address the deficit as we head through the summer, so. Over to Ron.
See if it reaches across. I was joking with somebody the other day that with my old eyes, I like black on white. So, if you don't see fancy colors, I apologize for that, but it makes my life a lot easier, so. We're talking a little bit about school funding in general. There obviously were a lot of operating referendum with districts across the state this spring. I think we're going to see a lot more this fall. And so, I kind of wanted to give a context for why we're seeing that across the state, what our scenario is with our expiring operating referendum, and then the things that we're going to need to consider as we move forward into the rest of the summer and toward the fall. Please be long enough. There we go. All right. So, if we look at referendum limits, they've been around since 1993. And up until about 2008, 2009, by law, they were indexed to the CPI. So, the amount that districts got for an increase on the revenue limit was equal to what was on CPI. They then started pulling away from that in the allocations for the revenue limit that drives all of our revenues as a school district. Got uncoupled, and they've never given us more than the CPI. But we do see less than the CPI quite often. Act 10 came along in the spring of, I believe it was 20, election year, 2010?
2010.
Yep. And then the following year, when they worked with the next biennium, they actually lowered school funding. So, that's where you see the blue line trending down. Since then, there's been a number of years when you can see it's flat, where there were zero increases, and certainly a number of years when the increase was less than what the inflation rate or the CPI rate was. And so, over that time, from 2008 through 2024, over those 16 years, we now have nearly a $3,400 differential between what we're getting allowed for an increase on our revenue limit compared to just what inflation increases would have been, looking back at that point in time. Every district has a different revenue limit per pupil. Every district has a different revenue limit per pupil that was based upon where their school fundings and, and taxes were way back in 1993 when it was set. We have over time kind of slipped backwards in that range to where just this last year with the, the last budget, they said the new state minimum is $11,000 per pupil. We actually got to increase to $11,000 because we were under that. There are some districts across the state who are much higher than that. And as we'll talk about later, how much operating referendum they has also even differentiate districts even further. All right, I got to remember that what I'm looking at on my screen closer is not exactly what's after I click it. So here is the actual, you know, slide from my 20, yep.
Got a quick question. So the 3,300, the 3,380 per pupil difference for us in annual budget dollars, what would that equate to? Ron?
So, so with our, let's see, I always got to get my, you got to count 4K as partial kids. You need to multiply that by about 2,300, so. What's that number? About a million?
0.7 million?
7,7, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so. Anybody who's been around long enough, who's been to previous school district presentations, this is an actual slide from my 2018 presentation. If you, we're at those, you've seen me do this for a long time, the difference between where costs are going and where revenues are going. Here was our slide from, from 2018. You can see, this is actual revenues now. This isn't just the, the amount per pupil. This is our actual budget revenues. And you can see that our Fund 10 revenues went backwards and then basically were flat lined as, as cost of inflation went up. So it's only gotten bigger as we've moved forward in time. That's why you see that spread just keeps growing because again, during the last biennial budget, when inflation started to go crazy post COVID, when you were seeing 4% and then 8% interest rates, the revenue limit allowed for, for school districts was zero. So no increases for those two years. They said, use your federal S R monies that were supposed to be helping kids get caught up after COVID. They said, use those just to balance your budget. And then those are one-time dollars and they go away. So that inflationary costs continued to rise, but school funding was $0 for those years. Going back to 2002, the state of Wisconsin was 11th or was 11% above the national average. We were also 11th in the nation in funding for schools. We slipped back by 2021 to 25th in the nation on our average funding per schools, 5.2% below the national average. Keep in mind, that was before those two years of $0 increases during the last biennial budget. So we're waiting to see when this gets updated, how far further we've slipped as a state compared to the rest of the nation. So how far will we fall to be determined? Here we look at school funding over the last 20 years, 2003 to 2023. School aids as a portion of the general state total revenues. We used to be 43.1% of the budget. We're now 36.6% of the budget. So when people say, boy, the, the costs for education keep going up, they do. That's what inflation does, but as a portion of the, the state budget, it's actually decreasing over time. Here's looking at school property tax levies as a percentage of personal income. So what, what's the tax burden on a person? You know, there's, there's going to be taxes always, but what does that look like compared to personal income? You can see over time, whoops, sorry, I'm looking at my slide. You can see over time, going back to 1985, it was about 2.5%. In 1993, when revenue limits came on board, it had risen to 2.8%. Of a person's income was the, the property tax burden and it's now down to 1.5%. So revenue limits are working. I'm not saying we need to get rid of revenue limits. I think revenue limits are working and they're, but at some level, they have to be indexing to what the cost of inflation are so that you're seeing some reasonable increases in revenues for, for the districts compared to the, the increases in costs we are. I wouldn't say blow up revenue limits. I think there, there is value in revenue limits. It's just, we need to make sure that we have an adjustment to get to where we need to be and that the increases, you know, stay reasonable over time.
The one I would also point out, Ron, that that is steadily declining.
Yes.
Really the last 10, 12 years.
Yep. Yeah, we, everybody feels like our taxes are always going up, but they, they forget the times when it's not, right? Or, or that it might not be going up as fast as some other costs are or, or that they're as fast as their incomes are. Here it looks at, you know, we, we oftentimes hear Wisconsin is a, a high tax state. This, this chart basically combines all taxes and fees because some states are very fee heavy. Some states are very income tax heavy. Some states are very property tax heavy. We're, we're a property tax heavy state. So this kind of combines all those things and looks at what is the, the total combined burden on an individual. We rank 32nd in the nation in Wisconsin and so less than many of our neighboring districts. And, and that's just, you know, no matter where you live in the United States, you always feel you're paying too much for taxes. And this is just saying that's, we're not, we're not on a line with what's going on elsewhere. If anything, we're below the national average there. We heard a lot during this last, this current biennium that we're in, when the budget, when they said $325 per pupil each year of the biennium. And then certainly when Governor Evers put 325 in to, to expand it for the next 400 years or whatever the, the term was that everybody got excited about. Let's put 325 into some context. So if we look at one of our graduating seniors who, who just graduated, going back to when they were in 4K, the very first year, the increase should have been $275 based upon what the CPI was. Then the increase was 200. The following year with, with, with the inflationary costs, the ad increase should have been $356. It was 200, so we went backwards. That gap is starting to grow. Then came the year where inflation would say we should have moved ahead. Instead, we actually moved backwards, $554. So funding for schools decreased. And so now that gap just is starting to grow over time. Coming out of that in the second year, there was a hundred dollar increase. And then again, a couple of years of zero. And then in 2019, 20, a 263 increase, 179, and then again, two years of zero. So that's where there's a lot of zeros or hundreds or 179s in there in those increases. And that's how that number just has steadily grown from being $75 behind what the inflationary cost was when our graduating seniors were in 4K to being $3,200 behind the cost of inflation by the time they graduated.
And these are per pupil numbers?
These are per pupil numbers, yes. And that also then ties to, you know, that's where we slide on that national ranking from 17th to 25th over the course of that 13, 14 years of that student's school career. Not knowing where we slid in the last two years as we were froze while much of the rest of the nation was seeing revenue increases to address that 4% inflationary increase that we did not see in Wisconsin. These are just some demographics for the state. And I will say, I'm looking at the three little bubbles more than the big bubble. We obviously on the big bubble, we're not probably as diverse as the state is as a whole. We would certainly be larger on our white demographics, but our, our, our demographics are becoming more diverse over time. We are very much like those three other bullets. Poverty statewide, 41%. In Monroe, it's 42.6. Students with disabilities statewide, 15%. We're at 14.6. English learners, 6.7, or 6% statewide, we're at 6.7. What I will say is it's amazing how those demographics have changed in, in just the like 18 years I've been here. Our poverty level used to be below 20%. Obviously, it's now up to 41%. Disabilities has probably been pretty, pretty steady over time. It might've even been higher at one point in time. And English learners certainly were, were far less than 1% at once upon a time, and now it's 6%. And that's the thing, when you look at the state average, it really varies from, from district to district. You'll see districts who have less than 10% of their students in poverty to districts who have over 80% of their students in poverty. So when I say we're right at the state average, that doesn't mean that the average district looks just like Monroe. Those districts really do vary with what they have. And oftentimes, some of the districts whose poverty percentages, disability percentages, and maybe even English learner percentages are, are lower, are the districts that are getting much more in revenues than perhaps we are here in Monroe or in some of the other districts. When we look at that 325, again, it's, it's, it's not a windfall. CPI was 4.12% this year, which that ties to what is allowed for, for bargaining and, and for raises. When you look at the, the last two years being zero, you know, even without that, we should have seen 393 and 403 just based upon what the legislative fiscal bureau is projecting for inflationary increases for this current budget year and next. So when we say 325 and people talk about it being a historic increase, if we were just getting inflationary, it would have been like 393 and, and 403. So it's not like this is a bonanza of money. When you go forward in time, you know, I mentioned earlier, we just got raised to the, the base for the revenue limit at 11,000. If there's a 3% inflationary increase, that's $330. So when people get excited about 325 for the next 400 years, that may not even be keeping up with inflation. And so there's some context here because obviously as each year, that 11,000 becomes 11,300 and then it becomes greater, right? And so the amount grows over time and a 325 set as a set number, don't view that as some savior number that, you know, is crazy, that makes no sense. It's, it's not even covering the cost of inflation currently. Obviously, as we look at, you know, the effects of, of this, you know, the 325 will have varying impacts on the districts based upon their enrollment trends. If you're in declining enrollment, you may see an increase per pupil, but if your three-year average revenue or, or enrollment is dropping, your actual revenue increase may be zero. That's been the case for Monroe a number of years in the past as we've had some slight decline in enrollment. And so in the long term, you reach a point where you can make some adjustments and reductions, much like we had to do this last spring. But in the dynamic short term, you know, losing 10 kids doesn't necessarily mean real costs go away. You have to wait until you reach that point where 40, 50, 60 students have gone away, where you can really start making some changes to, to adjust to that. And so that's where it becomes very difficult. Here we look at, advance you guys. Here we look at what those inflations are over time. You know, obviously we hope that we get back down to the 2% or less inflationary rate, but the last three years, 4, 7, 8%, 4.12%. That's pretty large increases and, and the, and the, again, the difficult part is, is 2022 and 2023, there were, there were no allowed increases. And so we were able to cover it with the backfill of the one-time federal dollars, but the problem is, is those costs have increased and that inflationary increase continues to grow off of that increase. Meanwhile, those one-time revenues went away. So our revenues aren't based off of having additional revenues those two years. We're back to where our revenue was in 2021 that we're growing off of. So that's how you just fall further and further behind. The other one, I'll, I'll take this one back to when I was, started my career because it's, it's funny when you're young and naive. So when I started in education in 1993, it was in the statutes that special education was supposed to be funded at 2/3. This is long before 2/3 came out, you know, funding came out in the late 90s, early, special education was the original 2/3 funding. And we got about 47% in 1993. And I said, well, why, we're supposed to get 2/3 funding, why are we getting 47%? What's going on here? And it was not a some sufficient allocation. It was a some certain, so they just put whatever pool into the money and then divvied it up. And, you know, ideally, we all got 2/3, but when you only funded at about 70% of 2/3, you, you only got 40 some percent. That's just the games they played. You can see here, as they started putting additional funding into like the equalization aid formula, when you start thinking of what 2/3 became in the late 90s, that number kept slipping. So the more money that they were putting into regular education aid, the less money they were putting into special education aid and actually funding the special education costs that, that districts are, have for students. And students, unfortunately, the percentages might not be changing a lot over time, but the amount of needs and the level of needs and the cost to provide those needs is increasing pretty rapidly.
For a lot of people, I think the special education requirements and the funding that we get is not understood very well. So.
Right.
Special education, as a district, we are mandated.
Mm-hmm.
Provide those services.
Correct.
And at one time, many years ago, you say they, the state was funding 2/3 of the district.
No, the state, the state by statute said they were going to fund 2/3. Going back as far as I can, been in the business since the 1993, they've never funded over about 47%.
The statute.
Even then.
67% of that district cost, but really it's less than 1/3.
Yeah, and so it's, it's dropped from 2,000 at 35% down to 31%. So that's exactly what you're saying, Phil.
We could say that's a pile of money.
Yeah.
It's not that the district is, has to bear the brunt of. Backs of their local taxpayers, et cetera.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah. And so each year we make a, a transfer from Fund 27, which is where we account for special education. We make a transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 27 to, to, to basically keep it whole. And that net transfer amount is the district burden. And I apologize, I don't have that up in front of me right now.
I think two years ago, it was just over 4 million.
Yeah, and so I was going to say that's, it's, it's been running right around that number, so. And so you can see there's, there's, there was tremendous excitement and cheering when we saw an increase in special education in the last budget. The goal is to try and get it up to 33% for next year. The problem with that might be is that with the inflationary costs rising as they are, I'm not sure the allocation amount will. fund thirty-three percent by the time next year rolls around, but at least we're not moving backwards. And so that's, that's, that's a big plus. But again, it's a cost where I think a lot of people assume, since it's required, that there's funding for it, uh, or adequate funding for it. That's just, it's one of those where the actual funding for it has, has slid backwards over a number of years.
Just a little more color on that too. So our legislators and, and professional groups have talked about increasing special percentages of special education funding for many, many years as a way to make up for those fund transfers um, that a lot of schools, you, you're spending real dollars and have to go into that for the, to help our students with IEPs. So that conversation is, is gaining some volume, but, uh, but I don't, I'm not sure if it's at the actionable part yet at the legislative level.
Yeah, and, and it's at the incremental amount, right? I mean, if we could, if we could see that number become forty, fifty percent, then there's suddenly, you know, then there's some movement, some traction there. You know, putting an extra percent in it doesn't move the bar enough. Uh, and so, uh. A, a, and again, those percentages can vary greatly from district to district. And so there's, that's the difficult part when you talk about funding at a state level. There's always gonna be, everyone starts looking at who's the winners and losers and, and where do they want those monies to go? Uh, we'll talk a little bit about, uh, a newer trend in education, um, is the, um, movement toward more and more funding going to privatization of, uh, education. And so this is the increase in the per pupil amount, uh, over the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So we, we've talked about revenue limits per pupil for public schools, uh, went up three hundred and twenty-five dollars per student. For K-eight voucher schools, it went up nearly fifteen hundred dollars per student. Uh, for nine twelve voucher schools, it went up, uh, over thirty-three hundred dollars per student. So our state has prioritized putting additional funding into private education uh, model, uh, at a much faster rate than, than the increase in public education. Here's a map that shows. Uh, that private education voucher program. You know, there was one district, uh, being Milwaukee, uh, back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Now eighty-two percent of districts get touched in, in some way by this, meaning that they have some students who are attending some type of a voucher program where, uh, aid is being taken away from the public school to fund private school students.
Again, put that in simpler terms, false, false. In other words, that our district gets a sum of money from the state. But if there's a voucher school that a student from our district is going to, we have to send money, thirty-three hundred dollars or whatever.
That's additional, that's per pupil, not, not, not in total, that's additional.
That private school.
And so I will say, we're fortunate in Monroe in the sense that, um, St. Dix is not part of the voucher program. So, you know, there's, there's, our money is not going to St. Victor's, to fund St. Victor's. So I don't wanna give anybody that illusion because that's not the case. What we do though is, uh, with the private school voucher, uh, for schools that are choosing to participate in it, and that number keeps growing annually, uh, and more schools keep opting into it annually. If your student goes to it, where we have to keep track of our students, we have to keep track of open enroll in and out students who are going to other, uh, public schools and, and we get that information. We don't get told who our students are, who are going to private schools that are getting a voucher. We don't know who they are, we don't know where they're attending. We just know that some private school has said, we have these students, they're from Monroe, and the state makes an adjustment. So in the case of us, last October, when we set our final budget, uh, when the October fifteenth aid formula came out, uh, you can recall at the annual meeting, we talked about, there was a ninety-nine thousand dollar adjustment, which was to take money out of the school district of Monroe aid formula and send somewhere, to some district or to some private school for the education of those children. We don't know who, we don't know where, um, and that's growing. It's growing annually and, uh, I, you know, I assume our number will continue to grow. Certainly if you're in a community where you have local private schools within your community, it's growing even faster. Because what they basically say is, um, as you opt in, any new students, uh, who are eligible, uh, for the, the voucher can, can become part of the voucher program. So in year one, you can't necessarily supplant everybody, but with each incoming class, they're all eligible for the voucher. And so what you're seeing is, as more schools are opting in and as more years of students are quote new students, that percentage keeps growing faster and faster and faster. And so there's some districts who are starting to see very significant impacts. Well, we're, we're a bit fortunate. You can see down in our star part of the state, there's actually a lot of green because there's a lot of, um, private schools down in our part of the state who haven't opted into the program. But you're starting to see statewide, um, it could be virtual voucher programs, right? Uh, and there's, so there's more and more opportunities, uh, for people and in more and more schools that are starting. Uh, that's why you see that growth, where now eighty-two percent of all districts are, are impacted by it.
Ron, just tell.
Yep.
So for the, the voucher program, we get eleven thousand dollars per student, right? So it's just that student no longer is part of the district, we don't get that eleven thousand? Or we both don't get that eleven thousand, plus we have to fund more?
So for those students, uh, you don't get to count those students. Uh, so basically, what happened in the case, I'll use that ninety-nine thousand from last year. They basically said, you have these students who are going to private voucher schools. The cost of those students is ninety-nine thousand. So we didn't get to count the students, but we got a credit to, for revenues for ninety-nine thousand, but we had an aid deduction for ninety-nine thousand that we then had to send off to those districts. So in essence, what is happening is it's an increase in the school district of Monroe tax bill that's going directly off to wherever those students are going to school and whatever private school they're going. So it's at some level net neutral to us in that, if you look at it in the context of that year, but to our taxpayers, it's a direct increase to their tax bill. Not to educate students in Monroe, but to educate students elsewhere.
To the two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars.
For last year, and again, it's, I expect that to continue to grow.
Local taxpayers are paying a hundred percent of the cost.
Yes, exactly, thank you. Uh, here's kind of the overtime. If you look at, recall Milwaukee was the original voucher program, so they've been in the longest. And you can see, they've reached the point where two-thirds of their, uh, private schools are getting sixty-seven percent of their students covered, uh, by voucher funds. And they're at thirteen percent of their students get a hundred percent of their, their costs covered, uh, by vouchers. Um, or I should say, uh, thirteen percent of their, uh, schools have a hundred percent of the students covered by vouchers, is what I should say. Uh, Racine was the next one that started, and so they're, they're a little bit lagging. And then in Wisconsin, you can see how that's increasing. And so we talk about the, the, the small numbers at nine point seven percent. That's each year, as more and more students become eligible, that percentage is gonna rise, right? So a few years ago, if you started it and you had an existing, let's call it K-five, none of those students were eligible, only new students that moved in or chose to start the program became eligible. You move forward a year, now all of a sudden, those kindergarten students are all new students, they're all eligible. A year later, K-one students are eligible. Eventually, uh, all those students are gonna be eligible for a voucher, uh, if they have, if they meet the, 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 uh, income dynamics that are required. So. I'll save my reveal, I'm getting to my point here in a bit as we get through this data. That's kind of the same thing, just shown in a different way. Uh, and so here's where you get to, you know, school funding and, and where it's going. So you look at the reduction in school district state aids. We've always sent a portion of the money, uh, down to Milwaukee, uh, into Racine. And again, much of those dollars, uh, you know, uh, spread across the state, don't, don't add up. They add up, but they're, they're not huge. Uh, but what you then get to is, when you talk about the Wisconsin public choice, a hundred and ninety-three, uh, million dollars there is strictly from aid reductions to school districts. That's what we talk about, that ninety-nine thousand that we got added to us and then we sent somewhere else, that's all in aid reduction. Only two point one six is coming from the state. So the state has prioritized private school funding, but they've put it on the backs of the local school districts and local school taxpayers. So when people aren't necessarily happy about their local tax bill, part of it isn't really under the control of the local school district because it's, it's, it's for private school, uh, choice that's out there. And you can see, um, you know, that total cost, uh, program cost is now between the state, uh, and the, and the state aid reductions locally is seven hundred and six million dollars. And so, uh, we're at five point seven two percent of, of local aids. And that, uh, number comes from school districts. Local taxpayers cover the cost of private education.
Statewide.
That's, and that's not counting, including the state portion, that's just saying your local property tax bill. You talk about Milwaukee, uh, Racine, uh, parental choices, Mike, is kind of where you were talking about a little bit ago. Eleven thousand is now where the school district of Monroe is. Uh, we, we got raised up to that minimum amount, right? Uh, uh, for, for what our revenue limit can be. If you're a nine twelve student, uh, who's in a, a private voucher program, that school gets twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars per student. So they're getting more than, than we do in Monroe. Once upon a time, uh, you know, back when it was just Milwaukee in it, and then when Racine joined in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, it was all covered through, through state funding, right? It was just, you know, the part of the state pool, got dispersed and, and, and paid for those two programs. Uh, since twenty sixteen, seventeen, all the students who've been increased into that, uh, funding formula get funded locally on the local, uh, school district property tax because of the offset for school aid. So what we've already talked about, district aid is reduced, uh, by the cost of the vouchers. Uh, we get a non-recurring one-time exemption for the equivalent amount. Uh, that, that holds us kind of quote harmless, however, our taxpayers take the brunt of that. And so that's, this slide is just saying what I had said earlier. We talked a little bit about special needs earlier. We talked about the, the percent we're trying, uh, to get to. Uh, so this is where, for a school, we have to account for all of our money that we spend on special education specific. And that's where we're trying to get to thirty-three percent, or we hope we might get back to thirty-three percent. That's of aid for those direct dollars that we have to prove were spent specifically for special education. If you're part of the program, uh, uh, of, of a private voucher program, if you say you have a special ed student, they could be ten minutes of speech language a week, they could be, you know, full-time aide. Uh, you're gonna get fifteen thousand sixty-five per pupil. Keep in mind, if you, they have two greater needs, you can refuse that and say, we can't, we don't have services, then the public school has to provide services. Um, if the cost exceeds that fifteen thousand sixty-five, they can submit a, an actual cost of claims. And if they do that, you can get up to basically, uh, twenty-two five ninety-eight, um, at a hundred percent of the cost. Keep in mind, schools, public schools get thirty-three percent.
This is for private schools.
Yep, so if they, if they have a student who they say special education, they can get that flat fifteen thousand. Uh, if they say, boy, this student has some additional needs, it's costing us more than fifteen thousand to educate this student. Up to twenty-two five ninety-eight, they can get a hundred percent of funding. Meanwhile, public schools get thirty-three cents on the dollar for the education of special education students. If their costs go beyond twenty-two five ninety-eight, uh, the remainder gets covered by state funding. So it's not just hitting the local taxpayers in, because again, that first twenty-two five ninety-eight, my ninety-nine thousand could be one of those students. And so instead of the eight thousand or the twelve thousand on the previous slide, uh, that student could be costing me twenty-two thousand, I don't know that. Uh, if it costs more than that, they get ninety percent of the remainder. Public schools, thirty-three percent. You don't see many schools who, uh, I should go up one, sorry. You don't see a lot of schools at the bottom who applied for, for going over the twenty-two five ninety-eight. The reason is usually if it gets to be that kind of cost level, they just say they don't have services and it gets sent back to the public school. Portion of state education dollars in private options. Wisconsin is third in the nation. Thirty-eight districts have zero to less than one percent of their state education funding going to private schools. Uh, Wisconsin has eleven percent. Now, oh, I'm sorry, I was there and then I went back. So Adam was taking pictures earlier, I gotta get to the right one now. Sorry, I'm going the wrong way. There we go. So, uh, Wisconsin is at eleven percent of state education or, or of education dollars, whether it be state or local taxpayer dollars, are funding private school education. Uh, and again, thirty-eight states, uh, in the nation either have no funding for private education or, or less than one percent. So the problem, and I'm hoping my next slide will say that, is we hear a lot coming out of Madison with legislators that we can't afford to fund schools at the rate costs are growing. Part of that problem is they've created two educational systems in the state of Wisconsin that we're now funding. We're funding public education and now we're also funding private education. The private education funding is growing at a much faster rate than public education. Uh, the amount of taxpayer funds being utilized for, for private school education is growing at a much faster rate. Uh, and that trend is that that percentage of education goss going to private education is just gonna continue to grow if the decisions in Madison continue to be what they have been in the last six, eight years.
Ron, just one, one thing that you kind of, you mentioned really quickly, but I don't think we've mentioned holistically yet, is that when you talked about the special needs scholarship program, that being funded at a hundred percent, you sort of mentioned that, you know, if they see that the costs are too high, then they can simply decline to accept that student. Think sort of as an overarching theme, like as a public school, we must. Think sort of as an overarching theme, like as a public school, we must provide services.
Correct.
We must provide services and we're funded at a lower percentage than schools that have a choice to provide those services.
Yeah, and I mean, and it's, I won't even just get tangled with just special education. I mean, it's like, we have a statutory right to transport students. So if, again, St. Vix doesn't participate in, in this program. But if, if you were a voucher district that was located within the school district of Monroe. Not only would you be getting those funds, which may be more the funds than the school district of Monroe is getting. The school district Monroe would still be the one responsible for transporting the students. So there are additional costs and services that are required of the public school when the private school may be getting more funding than the public school. So we went through that information just to give a context for some of the challenges with public school funding over the last, certainly ten to twenty years. I can go back to ninety-three when I started. I started the year revenue limits were implemented. When we look at this slide again, with where school district revenues are going compared to the cost of inflation. Part of the reason state funding isn't keeping up is they've chosen to fund other education that wasn't always funded. So when we hear them say, we can't afford public education. Then sometimes we have to ask, okay, then why are we funding other education? We have needs with public education that has to be addressed as well. And so hopefully we can get to a point where there is an adjustment to help close that gap of the thirty-three eighty. And then keep it at least growing at that rate. But if, if even if they start now and just say, okay, we're going to re-index to CPI, you know, the cost of inflation. That doesn't eliminate that gap that's already there. And so that's why more and more districts in the state have had to lean into operating referendums. And that's why operating referendums have grown over time. More districts are asking questions and they're asking bigger questions because that gap keeps growing. And the only way to fill that gap is to continue to cut programs and people out of your schools or to have local taxpayers say, yep, we're going to fund that and make up that difference. And at least in a referendum, they have that option. So operating referendums, I gotta remember to slide, that's my slide here. We're at a point where eighty-two percent of districts have called an operating referendum since revenue limits were imposed back in ninety-three, ninety-four. When, and so that says for a referendum, but they're talking operating referendums. So that's not to build a school. That's not to repair a school. That is for operating purposes. Standard funding of your school district. Eighty-two percent of school districts have had to run one. So where, when I started my career, referendums were truly exceptional things. You were building something. You were improving something. Referendums are now standard operating procedures just to keep the lights on and pay the bills. That's what they've become. Part of the problems people have said for years with the problems with operating referendums is there's risk. You never know if they're going to pass or not. They take time, they take resources, they take energy, meaning political capital, not only from the school district, but also from the taxpayers and the contention that's there. And all that takes away from educating students. The time we lose dealing with it, we don't make up, right? That, that's time loss focusing on educating students. Statewide, in twenty twenty-two. The average was five percent of, of school budgets was covered by operating referendum. For a hundred districts, that was ten percent. For fourteen districts, they were covering twenty-five percent of their budget with an operating referendum. Couple of districts not too far away from us were kind of in that ten percent range who didn't pass referendums. And so they're looking at very large reductions if, or coming back and running another question. Small rural and declining enrollment districts are especially vulnerable. We're considered rural, we're not considered necessarily small. We, we have been seeing a slight decline in our enrollment, so. Here's our non-recurring operating referendums in the past ten years. You can see it's a statewide issue. They're everywhere. Hundred ninety-six districts did a, a non-recurring question. Or a hundred twenty, ninety-six, I should say, passed, ninety failed, a, a, a non-recurring question. Another ninety-five districts passed an operating question that was recurring and, and forty-four districts failed one. So we're seeing a lot of districts out there. This is the spring of twenty twenty-four. There were sixty-eight operating questions just this spring. Forty-five non-recurring, twenty-three recurring. Pass rate was down a little bit compared to the previous years. Fifty-eight point eight, so almost fifty-nine percent passed. Non-recurring passed at a little greater rate than recurring. And that's kind of been a trend over time. In Monroe. We had, our first recurring referendum actually happened with some of the renovations back in the late nineties. And so we have a non-recurring continuous referendum allocation of seventy-nine, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred. That started way back then. We had a, a non-recurring shortly after I came and that it's not on the slide in two thousand seven. And then we had one that failed. But in our current run of referendums, starting in two thousand sixteen. We had a three-year non-recurring referendum for one point five million. In twenty eighteen, as that was coming to an end, it was reauthorized for another five years. So we've had a, a one and a half million dollars in operating referendum authority per year that's been included in our levy since twenty sixteen. So that's already been on people's tax bills and is included in that for these last eight years. Those are the funds that are expiring, basically at the end of this week, here at the end of June of twenty twenty-four. We spent a lot of time, this, this summer or spring, I should say, looking at our, our deficit. We typically, even with the one point five million of the additional operating referendum dollars. We a lot of times operate with a six to nine hundred thousand dollar budgeted deficit. Because we know we bring our budget in typically two to three percent under the actual cost, under what is budgeted. So we kind of make up that and the, the purpose is to kind of try and keep our fund balance somewhat level. We don't need it just continually growing. But we also need a fund balance in order to avoid short-term cash flow borrowing and other purposes. In twenty-three, twenty-four, our operating deficit was larger than usual. Again, that was the second year of zero-dollar increases. It was also federal dollars were starting to go away. We saw a one point three seven million operating deficit. So that's a little bit more than we would like to see. We'll come, we'll save and come in under budget, but we'll likely have to lean on our fund balance a little bit. As we were projecting forward to twenty-four, twenty-five, this last winter, spring. With that one point five million dollar operating referendum expiring. We were looking at a three point two million dollar deficit. So that one point three seven had grown with inflationary costs. And then also the one point five million went away. The board made over nine hundred thousand dollars of reductions. Some of those costs, when we look at insurance costs and other things, have been adjusted over time since then. So right now we're looking at about a two point six six million projected deficit without that one point five million dollar operating referendum. Our fund balance this, at the end of this year, even as we use a little bit, will likely be around eight million dollars. So if we simply ran that two point six million dollar budgeted deficit, knowing that we likely will do better than that in the actual cost of the year. We'd probably be using up about two million dollars of fund balance per year. Depending upon the state inflation rate and what the state budget does, it could be more. If the state continues to fund schools at less than the cost of inflation, it's only going to grow, right? That, that's what it's done for a number of years. That's what it would continue to do. So basically, within about a year and a half to two years, we would be dropping below kind of that six million dollar mark. And, and probably a little less than that now. That's needed to avoid short-term cash flow borrowing. And in four years, you would lose up, use up all of your fund balance. You'd be living on a credit card, right? You'd be basically waiting till half of a year until some of the tax bills came in and some of the state aid came in. And then you'd try to catch up. And then you would be waiting for another half of a year as you had expenditures till, till the rest of the tax bills came in August after the end of the school year. So the reason you have fund balance is revenues lag expenditures. And so if you don't have a fund balance, you're living off of a credit card. You're paying interest until you get the revenues come in. And obviously, when you're talking about taxpayer dollars, people would rather be spending money on programs and kids rather than an interest to a bank. So what are some of our alternatives? We could look at an operating referendum. We could continue with further budget cuts as we move forward or some combination thereof. I'm not of the opinion that we can hope and think that suddenly there's going to be a huge change in policy at the state level that's going to suddenly say, school education funding isn't, isn't a concern. That hasn't been the trend for the last twenty years and I don't see it turning quickly. So what are our referendum options? Sorry. Do they go? There we go. What are the referendum options? Do you run one? Do you not run one? When? Certainly presidential and governor fall elections provide the greatest turnout. I think that's the best barometer of your, your community, when you get as many people voting as possible. I think there's a lot of people who think that, you know, schools like to run them on weird dates or weird elections and hopeful that nobody shows up except for the people supporting them. That's not the case. The more people that turn out, the, the better it is to, to know where your community truly stands. And oftentimes, the better it, it, it works for the, for the school district just because you have a, a true barometer of where your community is. Recurring or non-recurring, there's, there's obviously benefits to both and cons to both. We ran non-recurring for a lot of years. And part of the mindset was twofold. One, it, it provided an opportunity for the board, myself, to look people in their eyes and say, did we do a good job with your last funds for the last three, five years, whatever? And do you trust us to use those dollars again good for the next three to five years, whatever it is? So that's one reason. The other reason was, I think that was baked into that was there was hope that there was going to be a new funding solution. In ninety-three, when revenue limits started, the intent was that it was a short-term solution. It was going to give the state three to five years to kind of stabilize, set a new baseline. And then they would have a new funding formula to work off of going forward. It hasn't happened. I don't see it happening. And so one of the big cons with that is as that gap continues to grow. You start having a vast bigger and bigger numbers, right? And, and they get to be somewhat scary numbers for, for our community. And so I think that's what some of the cons are as far as if you keep looking at non-recurring. You reach a point where the question becomes a ridiculous number almost. Recurring are a little harder because sometimes it's, it's tough for people to say, yep, we trust you with that money forever. And I'll be completely honest, no district that runs a recurring says, this is all we're going to ever need. They're going to say, this is what we need now. As that gap continues to grow, we're going to have to come back and ask again. Now, the next time you ask, you're asking for a smaller amount because you just need to stack kind of on top of what you already have. So it's a little less scary on a number amount as you move forward, but it is a commitment for, forever. And, and without, without a solution or a change in, 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 on the near horizon with school funding. I think that might be something that we need to change and look at if we do run a question is whether we ask for recurring amount to get a baseline that we can build off of. Timeline. Basically, a resolution would need to be passed by the second meeting in August. So ideally, we'd probably want to have some of that legal language and resolution firmed up by the first meeting in August. So that we can be ready to communicate at the start of the school year. And if, if need be, have that question finalized for the second meeting in August. So as we look forward to July, that's going to be some of our conversations are going to have to be. Are we interested in running a referendum or do we want to lean on our fund balance for a while? How much do we want to ask if we're going to referendum? And do we want to run a recurring or a non-recurring question? And so those are really the, the hurdles of the next two board meetings, conversations and into August. We have basically four meetings. Ideally, we would probably reach some kind of consensus within three meetings as to, are we running? What type of question are we running? How much would we be running? When we look at ourselves compared to other districts. As I said, depending upon where schools are in the funding formula and as, when you compare it to how many reductions and cuts have they made over the years and efficiencies. You can look at the referendum authority per pupil. So this is the amount of questions. This is the amount of dollars in these districts that are covered by approved referendums by those communities. So over and above their revenue limit, their communities have said, yes, we're willing to fund this amount. So in the red is Monroe. Currently, we're at a thousand twenty-five. Again, I said at the end of this week, one point five million of that expires. So we only have the seven ninety-seven five hundred that goes back to the nineties. So we would be down to three fifty-six. But right now, with the, with the referendum that's expiring, we're at a thousand twenty-five referendum dollars per pupil to help fund our schools. You can look across the way, you know, there's one district with none. There's one district who recently did not pass a referendum who's, they've cut back. And so they used to get a lot more than us, who are going to be less than us. But the majority of those districts are, are in the sometimes two to three plus times referendum, operating referendum authority that their communities have approved compared to where Monroe is currently. Let alone what's, what's expiring. You can then look at the Rock Valley districts. So districts that are, you know, getting closer to our size, that are, that are our, our current conference. And again, there's one district out there that doesn't use operating referendum dollars. The vast majority of the districts are at or more than what we're currently doing. And certainly much, much more than, you know, if we would move backwards to, to not having the current one point five million of authority that we have. High point, you see three point seven, three thousand seven hundred dollars. Many of them are in that twelve hundred to, to twenty-one hundred dollar range. Many of them are in that 1,200 to $2,100 range. And then if you look at the Badger Conference, so these are larger districts, we used to be part of the Badger. You know, there's four districts that don't run a question, and three that are more closer to the range that we're in, kind of, currently. And then there's about two, four, six, seven districts that are nearly twice or more per pupil of what we do. And so there's a really wide, wide range when you start looking at the Badger Conference. You look at, demographically, there's some very great changes within the Badger Conference as well, so it's kind of tough to find a rhyme or reason. Some of them have greater wealth than others, some of them have, you know, varying dynamics, so it's really tough to find a right reason why any of those numbers are what they are.
Good point, Ron, and in all three of the districts that you did comparisons, Monroe is considerably lower than the average per pupil cost.
Yeah, exactly. We're way, I mean, so when you look at the amount of authority, referendum authority per pupil, yeah, that would be the answer. Even with the 1.5 million that we're currently at, that is expiring, we're well below. And so we talked about that gap continuing to grow. Keep in mind, we've been at the 1.5 million for eight years. So that means that as a district, we've been making the reductions, and we've been making choices that have allowed us to stay at that same number for the last eight years. Many of those districts have ran multiple referendums and have increased them each time over that window of time. And so that will be part of our discussion, too, is as we move forward, can we continue to do one and a half million, while knowing that that likely means there would have to be additional cuts and reductions made? Or do we have to look at incrementing that a little bit currently? And so, again, when we talk about those pros and cons, at a million and a half, people know what the commitment is, they've had it on their tax bill for the last eight years. You know, if we increase it, then there's that uncertainty of, even if we say how much it goes up, there's going to be that uncertainty of, "What's this really going to cost me?"
Those budget reductions would be on top of the difficult $900,000.
Yeah, we've had for years, whenever we've, like, been able to not refill positions, we've not refilled them. We've steadily been increasing some of the reductions, like at Lincoln over the years, and so, yeah, there's been, we had a freeze to our health insurance for a number of years that certainly helped us, while many districts were seeing health insurance costs going, increasing at a much faster rate. So we've been doing a lot of different things over the years to maintain that cost, many of them perhaps not seen, or, you know, not easily seen by the community, but they've been happening. You know, savings by attrition whenever we can.
Can you go back to the deficit impacts slide? In my opinion, there's no question, we have to have a referendum question on the ballot this fall. I mean, really, there isn't one. We should have been having this discussion probably a year ago, six months ago, but because of the controversy surrounding the building referendum and the building project, we haven't, right?
Right.
And now it's put us in a really tough position. I mean, one and a half to two years before we need to resume short-term cash borrowing? I mean, that's, that's bad. That's really bad. Which is why I wanted to have this discussion before we talk about the, you know, the compensation and stuff like that, because, don't get me wrong, I love our staff, but it might be irresponsible to talk about raises at a level that we've been discussing when we're literally running out of money.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've had discussion, the board's had discussion on both sides of that. I think there's, we've settled with the majority of our staff for the coming school year. I think there's also the, over the last eight years, as our revenues have somewhat been stagnant or the same, many of those other districts perhaps were giving much greater increases than we have. At some point in time, do you stay competitive and do you keep staff, or do you lose staff? Because I think that's a reality that people need to understand, is there's a shortage of people out there in education right now. And so if you give people an excuse to look and to leave, they may do it. And so we can't control the fact that education, the revenue limit increases from the state aren't keeping up with inflation. That's, that's what the state has said. Now, the choice you have is what that looks like to your staff and what that looks like to your school district, and how those impacts hit. And you can choose to not fund those and see what the consequences may be, but you don't oftentimes get to recoup that. Once they're gone, they're gone. And, you know, so that's something, something that has to be weighed.
Yeah, I think I'd push back a little bit on two presumptions that you've declared there. One being that, you know, we couldn't have done anything because of controversy. And I think that what plays mainly into that is timing for when you're going to run a referendum. Having done this several times, it's not hyperbole to say, when you make an ask of your community, you want to do it at a time when you have the most voices at the polls. So we had a gubernatorial in '22, we've got a presidential in '24. Those are the two likely times that we would bring that. In my opinion, this is a timely conversation, and we've been as fiscally responsible as we can for as long as we possibly can. And yes, now, we have some decisions that have to be made, right? So that would be the first counter that I would propose there. And then, sort of along the lines of what Ron was saying, it's important that our compensation keeps up with the market to remain competitive, right? I think we're going to talk about what came out of the ERC as a recommendation, and those are likely commiserate changes based on market-driven pressures, right? I don't think they're out of line. I don't think that they are. When you look at the whole of the budget, I don't think that they are a large percentage of the overall budget. And what it helps to do is ensure that individuals that are in the most influential positions within the organizational structure are compensated in a way that hopefully prevents them from becoming flight risks. So those are the two things that are on my mind, I guess, when I listened to your initial comment there. Open to any feedback you have to that.
The only thing I'll add is I just added up, and I believe if I counted right, there's 26 districts that are investing into their communities at far greater levels than we are, that are investing into their districts and their people. And I would be really cautious to say that we're not being responsible if we're encouraging our people to stay by taking care of them like we've done the rest of the staff.
There's also, you know, there's a consideration for how much we're allowed to even increase salaries by. So I think that that's not perhaps terribly well-understood by the public. For our professional and support staff, we're allowed to increase wages by CPI each year, no more, right? So if a year, if we go through one year and not increase at a CPI rate, and the following year, it's not as high as the previous year, you don't get a do-over. You have, so we have this disjointed funding program from the state that is decoupled from CPI, and yet, in order to continue to put the best, most qualified educators and support staff in front of our people, we have to track our budget to CPI. And I think that's probably, you know, the message that I'm going to take from the bulk of the time that Ron took to educate us on this, is that that's a real problem for us, and how communities across the state are having to solve that is by going to referendum and asking their taxpayers directly to make up for where our legislators in Madison are
So just clarify that.
Yeah.
So, like, in the business world, you can say, "Okay, we're running in the red, we're not doing well, this year we're not going to get raises, we'll make it up for you next year if you make everything right, we balance the budget." And so CPI is 4% this year, you got 0% this year, next year you'll get 8%, right? In the business world, that works. In the public education system, it's, if you go 0%, say, "We'll make it up next year", whatever CPI, that's the absolute maximum you can give, you can never make it up.
Right. Yeah, I mean, there's some nuances, like, you know, bonuses, whatever, but in reality, we, you know, there was one year when it was a 0.23% CPI. People got a 0.23% raise, right? There were years when, even on some of those years when the CPI was in the 2+% range, I'm not sure that we either, I know there were years when we didn't give the full CPI. And so last year certainly, yeah, last year certainly, when the CPI was 8+%, we were about 4%, we were about half of that. And so it's not like if next year falls down to 1%, we can say, "Oh, we'll do 4% and catch up." No, CPI drives the equation, so you can, it's like a governor that throttles you so that you can't go any faster, that's an old word, right, governor, that stuff? But it's not like you can catch up beyond that, right? So, yeah, it's, much like the funding formula, once you start falling behind on the staff wage side of the world as well, you don't have a mechanism to make adjustments, to close that gap. It just keeps widening, because there are districts last year who gave 8%. And so now, when they're looking at 4%, 4% on top of 8% is a much different number than 4% on top of 4%, right? And so that widens too, over time.
And I think, Phil, you had mentioned, or you'd mentioned at some point, the reductions that we made, the difficult decisions we had to make to reduce by 900,000. The conversation that we had at board meetings at that time was, to go any deeper than the 900,000 was not something that the board was comfortable doing at that time. I think that this, if the board chooses to go to a referendum, then that helps to inform our decisions, and our entire community gets to weigh in on whether or not the district needs to seek additional cuts in fund, cuts to our budget.
Yeah, those deficit projections are built with the assumption that there will be raises given to staff, right? So it's not like this is in addition to what those projections are.
Additional questions or conversations on this one? We will look to bring another discussion on a possible referendum back to the board at the next meeting. So all of the information that Ron's presented in our conversations, we'll have some time to process all of that and reach out to Fig with any additional questions that you may have, as we prepare to discuss that at the next meeting.
I assume, because I've been starting to see it already, I assume you'll start seeing. More and more districts will be having more and more of these conversations. I've started to see the first couple districts who are talking about this fall, but I mean, much like we knew it was coming, you know, even though we're not actively having these discussions till now, that's been the case with most of the districts. They've talked about it coming for a long time, I know even when I was, even when we're doing the building referendum question, I said, "That operating issue isn't going to go away, that's going to have to come back and be talked about again." So.
Ron, this was an excellent presentation. I think there was some really good historical information, there was some really good comparative information, so thank you.
I agree. Thank you so much. That comparative data is really enlightening.
Yeah, and a lot of that, I'll give credit to, you know, some of it is, like, comparing us to some of those other districts, those are obviously information that I've accumulated and pulled together, but a lot of those other slides that talk about just the history of the, I used to always have to track that myself, it's been in my presentations going back for, to previous school districts. But it's something now that WASBO and WASDA and the SAA, which is the School Administrator Alliance, are finally starting to lean into and are saying, you know, "You can't just be apolitical, we need to talk about, we need to advocate for kids," right? And we can't have a school funding system continually to fall further and further behind. And we can't be taking money from the one funding program that every school district is mandated to have to fund alternatives to that education system.
Thanks, Ron, your work on this one.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. We're going to move on with our amended agenda. The next item is going to be going into a closed session. We'll be going into a closed session in accordance with Wisconsin, excuse me, moving to closed session in accordance with Wisconsin statute 19.85, Pren 1, Pren C, for the purpose of discussing administrative and exempt staff compensation. We do have action after closed, we'll come back in to open to take that action. It is now 9:50. Entertained a motion.
Second.
Motion by Nikki, and a second by Mike. Nikki, would you call the roll, please?
Yep, Nikki, yes. Jim's absent, Rich.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Mike.
Yep.
Teresa.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.